Welcome. We have a little bit of a long, ambitious day today, and we're looking forward to get it through expeditiously, and thank you all so much. Mr. Leahy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. I have with us today members from the Department of Planning, Bobby Tahan, the Director of Planning, and Kathy Warren, the Strategic Growth Area Division Manager. And Kathy is going to brief us on the draft of the Resort Area Strategic Plan, also known as the RACAP Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager has said, I am here to present the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan, our update to this plan for 2030. I'd like to make a couple of quick introductions. We have some of our Steering Committee members here today. We have Nancy Parker. She's representing the Resort Beach Civic League, and then Gary Ryan with MOKA. We also have Mel Price with Work Program Architects, who are our consultant for the project, and then our Project Manager Debbie Zibner with the SGA office. So here's an overview of our presentation today. And we're going to talk a little bit about our strategic growth areas in general. We'll talk about the makeup of our Steering Committee, the 2008 RACAP Plan priorities, the plan update process, our public engagement, our Steering Committee's vision, the 2030 RACAP Plan priorities, and then our next steps and schedule. So just as a quick review of our SGAs, we have eight strategic growth areas that were designated to absorb future growth in the city. These were designated in the 2003 Comprehensive Plan, and were adopted by City Council between the years of 2008 and 2013, and in the Comprehensive Plan between 2009 and 2016. It's important to note that these are visionary documents. Each has a unique, long-range master plan describing the future vision, and that helps us guide policy decisions for growth and development in each area. But they all have common themes: higher densities, connectivity, multimodal transportation, open space and trails, parking systems, and of course pedestrian-friendly. This is just a map showing our strategic growth areas, the six, of course, that are located centrally in the city, and then Burton Station in the northwest quadrant, and Centerville in the southwest. Here's the makeup of our Steering Committee. Special thanks have to go out to our council liaisons, Councilwoman Rosemary Wilson in the very beginning, and then Councilman Tower has worked to the bitter end with us. So thank you both. And then we have members, commissioners from the Planning Commission, representatives from the BBDA, the Resort Advisory Commission, Restaurant and Hotel Associations, our Civic Leagues, Vibe and MOKA, the VB Vision, and the Aquarium. And of course, again, our consultants, WPA and their team, and then city staff. Which brings us to why we are here today. It's time for a refresh. On the left is our 2008 plan, and a lot has occurred in the resort since then. So it's time to establish new priorities as we move forward into the next decade. Our 2008 RACAP had eight priorities. Six are either underway or were accomplished. Two were not completed: the Headquarters Hotel and the Central Management Entity. This shows a map of progress from 2008 to 2018. The purple shows completed projects. An example of that is the Hyatt House at 27th Street. The orange are planned projects. Central Beach Road Improvements are an example. And then the yellow is proposed, and the Dome Site would be a good example of that. Our process for the plan update included three phases. We began the process in November 2018 with Phase One, which was led by city staff, and then we engaged the services of Work Program Architects to assist with Phases Two and Three of exploring and deciding. Our public engagement consisted of two workshops with 350 attendees, two Public Input.com surveys with just under 2,600 participants. So in total, we had almost 3,000 people provide input to this process. And here are some pictures of the workshops. So the first item we addressed was the boundary of the 2008 RACAP. It was decided to expand the boundary down the General Booth Corridor to include the Aquarium because of its strong relationship with the resort. Here is the Steering Committee's vision for the plan: to create a unique sense of welcome and arrival, provide a safe and comfortable place for residents and visitors, retain the feel of an Oceanside Resort with a sense of community, preserve the feeling of Virginia Beach identity, culture, and history through art and design, provide a simultaneous sense of calm and renewed energy for residents and visitors, address sea level rise and coastal resilience, and rehabilitate and preserve historic structures and properties where we And here are the new priorities established for the RACAP 2030. Adopt the best practices of a central management entity, develop a comprehensive mobility plan, design and implement streetscape improvements, enhance and develop connected green and open spaces, design and construct a gateway at 21st Street that provides a sense of welcome and arrival, support impactful projects that benefit the resort area and the city of Virginia Beach as a whole, and then support residential and mixed-use development in the resort area. It's important to note here that each of these will be viewed as separate initiatives that we will work on individually over the next several years. So first, adopt the best practices of a central management entity when it comes to things like beautification, placemaking, wayfinding. It is unnecessary to create a separate entity, but the goal here is to define the additional services desired in the resort, such as more landscaping or more maintenance, and look to potentially fund those services through a source like the TIP Fund. We want our first-class resort to look like one. And here are some good examples of placemaking and beautification. Next, develop a comprehensive mobility plan. We need a comprehensive plan that looks at all things transportation: vehicles, trolleys, e-scooters as an example. Look at our road network, our parking, our pedestrians, and how they all work together for seamless flow. This is just a map showing our existing road network within the resort coming in and out of the oceanfront. Next, develop and implement streetscape improvements with priority on 17th Street, Virginia Beach Boulevard west of Cypress, and then Atlantic Avenue in the core, 15th to 25th Streets. There's a great deal of emphasis to keep the momentum going. 19th Street project will be complete late summer, and there is a strong desire to continue to make our resort streets easier and safer to navigate for vehicles and pedestrians. These improvements would include traffic calming, landscaping, lighting, and site furnishings, such as new benches and trash receptacles. And again, here are some examples of well-designed abiding streets and sidewalks. And here we have an existing picture of 17th Street on the left, and what it could look like with new wider sidewalks, a bike lane, new pedestrian lighting. And again, using the Vibe District as an example, with the new streetscapes going on in 17th, in the future, 18th, and currently on 19th Streets. The goal is to keep the momentum going and create a more connected community. Next, enhance and develop connected green and open spaces with two points of emphasis here: one, for the oceanfront connector parks, maintain public views to the water, and improve our existing connector parks by adding new amenities such as event and performance spaces, bathrooms, and day-use showers. The second is for our new and off-beach parks, to prioritize shade, public art, recreational spaces, and smaller amenities, and to develop passive green open spaces that connect inland neighborhoods to the beach. Here's a conceptual rendering of Rudy Loop as a park. When asked about the Rudy Loop, 88% liked green space in this area. Here, it's important to note that this rendering was meant to provide concepts that people could react to and tell us what they like and don't like. It was not meant to say, "This is how we will develop Rudy Loop Park." That will have a process of its own. Next, the gateway at 21st Street. There was a strong consensus here that we need to create a sense of arrival at 21st Street to make it clear that you have arrived. And you'll note on this map with the smaller circles, there are several other gateways that eventually we'd like to do something for a sense of arrival, but 21st Street is the priority at this time. And again, a conceptual rendering to get people to react. The two most liked elements of this concept were the structural element over the roadway, right by the building, and the potential to partner with MOKA and create something dynamic with the existing building where the Visitor Center is located. Next, to support impactful projects that benefit the resort area and the city, such as the Marina District, Rudy Loop, Convention Center Hotel, and Aquarium. And finally, to support residential and mixed-use development in the resort area. With market rate and workforce housing affordable and J-1 housing and mixed-use development, this will all help us advance our year-round activity in the resort. And wherever possible, support mixed-income residential development that provides housing that can support moderate-income households and the resort area workforce. And seek to ensure that 15% to 20% of residential development is affordable and/or workforce housing to help ensure housing opportunities for the resort area workforce and for diversity of households. Also, to ensure accessibility is provided, residential development to ensure access for people with disabilities. And ultimately, with any of these priorities that the RACAP 2030 establishes, we support the city's efforts for sea level rise and coastal resiliency within the resort. This is just a project matrix that shows our short, mid, and long-term goals. We would like our initial focus to be on the best practices of a central management entity and to develop a mobility plan for the resort in the short term. And finally, our schedule moving forward. After today's briefing, the Planning Commission will hold their public hearing on February 12th. City Council's public hearing will be on March 3rd, and the final vote for approval on March 17th. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Tower, Mr. Moss.
I would like to say how much I enjoyed working with this committee. It was one of my first experiences as a councilperson, and it will have a lasting impact on my work on council and generally my life at the beach. I don't recall ever having seen a group of people who were more pleasantly persistent in getting a job done. And I want to commend everybody, Kathy and Deb, and Mel, and WPA, and all of the members of the committee for really negotiating. You know, there were a lot of people on the committee that shared a common interest in the resort area, and sometimes even a common history with it. But the more we went along, the more we discover about each other, and in some cases, we discover that people don't share common views of where we are, and certainly not of where we want to be. So merging all those ideas and reconciling them as best we can, and sometimes they're not so reconcilable, and that's probably evident from close reading of the plan, is a result you get. But I did want to commend everybody that's been a part of it. I was very happy for it. I think it's going to be a great plan for the beach to continue to look at in the resort area for the next 10 years. So, thank you.
John.
First of all, I think it's important to report. I understand why you're focused on the priority of sea level rise and flooded drainage in the resort system, but it certainly would communicate better if you communicated that your priority was part of the larger priority for the community as a whole. I think that would be a good amendment to, you know, because I think one of the things I've been trying to stress at public hearing that there are in meetings, and I know Mr. Jones has been to some of them, that this is a community problem, and no one's priority did not have their house flood as higher than anyone else's. And I think we just need, I think that would help us in our messaging to see that we're all in this, I'll call it, sea level rise and drainage issue together, and you're just one of the many kids in the classroom, or sort of speaking of families that have a flooding problem. That would help. I do think, I don't know how you would address this, but I've asked a lot of questions about it, but it's unclear in your strategy to what extent it relies upon additional public debt, and public meaning taxpayer funding outside the TIP program. I don't think you can execute all those things inside the TIP program, and so therefore it's going to compete with flooding, which is our number-one thing we've got to deal with in the near term. So I think it would be important that the strategy could talk, no strategy that's not financially executable is a strategy. And so I think that's a fiscal aspect of your strategy, needs to be addressed somewhere, and maybe that comes in your terms of your near-term stuff is executable and other stuff is revisited later. But I do think it has to acknowledge the fiscal constraints.
God bless you.
Have an impact. And specifically, this Convention Hotel, if the TIP Fund can make all those contributions, you have a case, but that's going to rely upon debt, debt at all. Most of our debt capacity will be consumed by our flooding and drainage needs, and our school modernization needs. That just needs to be a realism. Not saying your plan isn't good and the things you want to do, but over the next five years, our debt plate is pretty full. And I just don't want people to have a bigger appetite as to what can happen versus what our debt borrowing capacity will facilitate. That's just observations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Balucci, and then Rosemary.
Well, I just want to thank you for updating us on this, and also for all the work that I know that everyone in, who works for the city of Virginia Beach who are involved with this, contributed, as well as many residents of Virginia Beach and people who are invested in the success of our resort and indeed throughout our city. And I just, something came to mind as we're considering the resort, because it's been a very topical matter for this council and I think in our community, and that's the issue of homelessness. And I see many issues that we face are reflected in this report, including transportation, flooding and resilience, and sea level rise. Economic development is reflected here, certainly. And while the issue of homelessness may not be one that impacts everyone, for those it does impact, the impact is tremendous, and it's an issue that we're spending a lot of time, you know, at least at the council level and certainly among city staff and with nonprofit community as well, trying to innovate solutions for and compassionate responses to. And because homelessness is such an issue that's relevant to the resort in particular, I wonder if the committee considered that in any way, and if or how that could be reflected as part of the strategy.
So homelessness, the conversation did come up at the Steering Committee, and they just felt that this was not the best vehicle to address that issue with, that that's something that ongoing conversations are happening, we're working on separately, and they just felt this wasn't the place necessarily to address that at this time.
I think I respectfully disagree with that. And, well, I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Rosemary.
Well, Mr. Tower is right. There was a lot of hard work and a lot of effort put into all of this, and a lot of good minds that really care about what happens there. I just wanted to, when you look at this picture, it's wall-to-wall concrete and hard surfaces, and it's just like, there's no place for the rainwater to go. And I did mention this at some of the meetings, that I still would have liked to have seen a segment, and obviously, the green spaces is going to be really great, but where we could utilize or encourage future development to use best practices and just pervious surfaces that can be done that can help with the runoff, because it's all concrete. It's wall-to-wall concrete. And whatever, there's other best practices out there that can help with this green infrastructure. And I really wish we would include some of that to encourage future developers to include those in some of their plans.
Right, and we do address that in the plan, and we will encourage and support always using those types of materials in these new projects. Most definitely, that's at the top of everyone's mind, is the sea level rise and coastal resiliency.
Anybody else?
I want to thank you for a great report and a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And if I could just say that I think this is very important for a lot of reasons, because this is an opportunity for people to rediscover their beach and to come back. And by having things to do and parking and working into this whole plan. But the other thing about turning it into a year-round destination by people living out there, and that means the restaurants and all the other businesses are going to be more year-round. About a year ago on Christmas Day, I was looking for a restaurant out there and couldn't find anyone, not too many places open. But the point is, though, that once we get the Sports Center online, and then, you know, we get the revitalization, and then you've got the Vibe District, and, you know, moving forward with the Dome, you know, this could be a true 757 destination for many, many people. And, you know, I agree with Mr. Moss, you know, flooding is a priority, but we have to create that new revenue, you know, to bring in, to help pay for the bills for the school modernization and the massive amount of financial responsibilities we face as a city. But the thing is, though, it's got to be a good business model that's going to prove productive. But the idea about creating that destination, and, you know, I think it's going to start with the Sports Center and then cascade on down, and, you know, the success of the Vibe District. And, you know, I just think we have a tremendous opportunity. I recently took a tour with the Atlantic Avenue Association, and Atlantic Avenue can use some revitalization. But once again, it's, you know, it's got to be a model that is going to help pay for itself by the new businesses, and, you know, I think it starts with a plan, and I want to thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Kathy. So Mayor, and members of council, the next briefing is on a lease of the portion of the Lynn Haven Inlet, which is on the west side of the Lesnar Bridge, not the Lynn Haven Marina. They are sometimes confused. You may have seen an article in the paper this morning talking about the Dominion and Orsted's pilot study, pilot test of two offshore windmills. And Mark and his staff are going to come and get, provide a briefing on the requested use of our wharf for that, to support that project. Mark, is this the one I should excuse myself from?
Uh, no.
Okay.
And this is a public briefing, so you can remain.
All right, thank you. And if I forgot, I'd like to introduce Mark Johnson, our Director of Public Works.
Hi, Mark. Welcome.
How is everybody? I just, thank you very much to give you this brief. I want to introduce the team. We've had, working on this for quite some time with the City Attorney's Office and Economic Development. Matter of fact, I think Public Works got, started the first talks with Orsted probably the first part of May of 2019. So we've really been working this. We've been trying to work with them, help them identify a location where they could have an onshore office space. So today, and, well, if you look at this picture right now, you see the Lesnar Bridge is still under construction. You see Crab Creek Boat Launch, and then you see the McLean, I'll call it the trestle system, where they had sections of the bridge they'd work on, and then they barge them out and build the bridge. We're pretty much talking about the area that's in between the trestle system and the parking lot right in here, and that's where they're proposing to put their office building, okay? What I'm going to talk about is the history of the site, briefly, real briefly about the project, coastal offshore wind project, overview of Orsted Site itself, and the overview of the general lease conditions. Okay, a quick history of the site. The city purchased the site in 1972. It was an active stockpile sand, beach-quality stockpile site, which the Corps used to haul sand to the resort beach. In 2002, the city constructed Crab Creek Boat Ramp. We had to do that after we cleared the site of a federal easement, which allowed us to use the property. Recently, you saw that we used the site as part of the construction of Lesnar Bridge, and part of that construction, we built the concrete wharf that remains there today, and that is a valuable asset. Get to the next, which is, what uses do we use right there? Basically, any federal dredging of the Lynn Haven Inlet, they use that wharf, they use that site to perform that operation. We will definitely use the site for bridge maintenance whenever we have to. We actively use the site for dredging. We just had a pre-construction meeting with our dredge contractor who's going to dredge Crab Creek and London Bridge Creek, and they should be starting within a week or two. So that's the activity you're going to see there in February towards the end of March. We also work with other state agencies and private, non-private groups, such as the Lynn Haven River Now, to construct oyster reefs. We let Lynn Haven River Now use the site. We also recently let VIMS use the site. In addition, on occasion, the Coast Guard uses the wharf also. So it's an active site. We really work with all our partners, federal, state, and nonprofit, so that they can use that site to accomplish what they want to do. Okay, the, basically, the... Okay, the, basically, the Wind Farm project, right now, it's just, the goal is to construct two wind turbines, 24 nautical miles out into the ocean. The plan is to get it done by September, is what I understand. They need an onshore office area, and they also need a launch point. The wharf, the site where we had the construction trailers at this location really suit what they're asking us to do. Basically, it's an office building. It's an area to put some Conex boxes where they can put material in that. It's a launch point where they can put that material that they're storing on a launch boat along with personnel, ferry them out 24 miles to the job site, ferry them back. That's what they're doing right there. It's not, the lease does not allow them to stockpile major constructional components of the wind turbine itself or the blades. That's not the purpose of the site. The purpose of the site is to manage the construction activity that's out in the ocean. Just give you a quick overview of the site itself. Again, this is the area, and you kind of see the picture of the old construction trailers from McLean. They're going to put about a 5,000 square foot modular building right there, put a fence around it, and you're going to have Conex boxes closer to the channel, walkway. Their launch point is right down here, right here. You're seeing a fence, that's where they'll have like a fuel tank, above-ground fuel tank to provide fuel to the vessel. They'll access the site roughly through here, and basically, that's how it'll function. If there's any other sites that, uses that need to use the site, we can accommodate them down through here. We're set up right here, reserving this area should the Kertuk need to come in town or any other Army Corps of Engineers dredge vessel, they can berth at that location right there. So we've really worked with them to meet their needs, along with retaining what we feel we need to allow other entities use the site as they feel they need to do that. So, terms of the lease. Overall, the site and including the boat ramp is roughly 15 acres. The site that we're, the area that we're providing is roughly five and a half acres. The lease itself is for six months, but it can be extended three more six-month terms. So for a total, maximum total right now of two years. We started talking to them, the first thing we did, we checked to see if city council has voted on any action. You did. You passed a resolution August 7, 2018, and you reaffirmed it in August 6, 2019. We view it as their quasi-governmental entity that, you know, is doing good things, trying to create an industry which hopefully will grow and prosper in the city of Virginia Beach. So that was our logic when we said, hey, we'll let you use the site rent-free, okay? That's how we viewed it. We do have the ability to, in the lease, we do have the ability, we've stipulated what they can use the site for. If they change that use or want to expand that use, they have to come and see us and talk to us again. They're responsible for the maintenance and the preparation of the site, it's all on them. Plus, the city attorney's made sure that we have a million-dollar general liability insurance policy for their actions on that site. So I will close and enter into discussions with this nice picture, a little bit bigger, where you can see how the site has been used in the past.
Any questions? Mr. Tower?
Mark, a couple of questions. One, is this site going to be used for going out on daily trips, weather permitting, I guess, to this actual site? How much traffic do you think they're going to generate?
I would envision at least one in the morning, one at night, and I'm assuming daily.
Right. And do you, is there any thought of having other, using other sites for that, for the transportation part of it? I'm thinking out of Rudy Inlet. I mean, I don't know exactly where these are, but it seems to me Rudy Inlet might be closer.
I'll just say, originally, they were looking at Rudy. We were talking to them about Rudy, but, and we're looking at our dredge operation site that is encumbered with, I'll say Navy, our agreement with the Navy precludes them from using that site.
Okay.
We really explored Rudy before we went, came here.
I was really thinking of Rudy more as a site just for people, no equipment, no, you know, buildings, but they're probably-
Right now, we can't do it.
Okay. And will they use their own boats to transfer-
Yes, sir.
-people that they own themselves?
They'll either own them, rent them, or lease them.
Okay, well, that's what I was kind of wondering, whether they're going to generate business for our local guys that have boats for rent and stuff, too.
Aaron, thanks.
The above-ground storage tank for fuel, how big is that? How much fuel do we talk?
I'd say at least 5,000.
5,000?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm lost for my dimensions right now, but it's going to be above-ground, you know, fenced in, but it'll be set up where it probably has a container, so if you have a spill, the spill's contained, so it's all OSHA-approved.
We'll get you that information.
I mean, I'm just wondering, that's my biggest concern, just obviously fuel, fuel spills.
Yeah, that's why it's above-ground, everybody can see it, and everybody can see what's going on with it.
All right, thank you.
Jeff?
It'll be removed, though, the fuel-
Yes.
-once they're done.
When they're done-
So it's not going to be any kind of permanent construction.
No, ma'am.
All right, cool. Okay, John?
Just want to make a statement. Due to my investment posture in Dominion Resources, I can passively observe this public meeting, but I cannot participate.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. At this point, council liaison reports. None? Council comments? Jeff?
I guess this would fall under, this is George Collins' committee. I saw the library had a feedback session with some of the community, our younger community, and they did all these posters of what they'd like for the city to look like in years to come. I think that if we could acquire that for our retreat-
Sure.
From online, it looked really interesting, and they had a lot of really cool ideas that I think would, even if we didn't spend a lot of time discussing, it might be beneficial for us all to have eyes on. It's not really a report, but-
Okay.
Did you do one?
No.
Yes, Jim?
I've got, I'll pass this around. If y'all recall, I mentioned the Board of Building Code appeals to you and changing it up on the, keep going for me, maybe more of it in that way. But essentially, it's, John, it's right down front here.
Oh, thank you. I thought you were asking something else.
It basically changes the Board of Building Code appeals. If you guys recall, in, when we do appointments, we have multiple different divisions and within the Board of Building Code appeals. The state code does not require that, and this basically simplifies it to make it a lot easier and a lot easier to appoint people and actually defines meetings and things like that, so we can actually get it organized. So I just wanted to make sure everybody have it, and I would put this on in a couple of weeks, but I just want everybody to see this.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary?
So tomorrow, the students, we have a junior historic preservation commission. We have so many young people who are interested in historic preservation, we formed a junior commission, which is kind of amazing. Preservation community is just really astounded by it. In fact, they are recognizing the, our junior historic preservation commission with an award next month because of all the work that's been done. Anyway, tomorrow, with Mark Reed, there's a group of students and myself, we're going to go to Richmond, and they're going to be recognized on the floor of the Senate for being there and being able to talk to different legislators about some historic preservation issues. They're really interested in this, so. We did this two years ago, and they really, really enjoyed it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? John?
A couple items. First, at some future date, maybe not today, but I want to talk about the treatment of unsolicited proposals that are deemed by the city attorney to not be exempt from FOIA. I believe when those are received, that the council should receive them immediately upon their receipt. And if they're not exempt from FOIA, they should be made available to the public at the same time. I think the current practice that we have doesn't meet our voiceover of transparency, and we need to fix that, in my personal opinion. Also, I think at some point going forward, we need to talk about the visions letter of 23 January to this body, Vision 2040 and their concerns, and we need to address those. I won't talk about those now. I know I mentioned this before, and maybe the letter in the envelope we got last week from the city manager was to compliance with that, but about a read file that we agreed to at our last retreat of any correspondence signed by any city employee that went to an external agency on a policy or other high significant matter. To this date, I haven't seen us getting those. This gets to the agenda items, I'll just address it now, but it's on the very end of all the number 24. But I requested, when we first received notice that workforce housing, that was like two weeks ago Friday, I believe it was, I requested significant amount of information to understand that issue. I watched it on TV, but the explanation was a bumper sticker, and I have yet to receive that, and I'm hoping that we won't be voting on that today. But if we are, I'll be happy to go through all the questions that have not been answered. I'm noticing the general assembly package, we're not getting really a narrative summary of all the proposed tax and fee increases that could be imposed upon our citizens. I think that's a shortcoming of the package that we are receiving. There isn't also a good summary that, easily digestible, that talks about all the new proposed regional bodies and authorities, and also how existing regional authorities' powers are being expanded, nor the additional revenues that they're going to receive, nor the categories for which they could be expended. I think without that, it's hard for us to engage, and believe me, with the volume of activity, you'd have to not sleep at all to keep track with all the bills and their status. And then there's been a number of bills that have been talking about requiring new planning requirements, that we, things that we have to address in our comp plans, and I don't, haven't recalled any briefings on that, and I don't know how our staff is engaging without direction from us. So hopefully, we're not concurring or non-concurring, but no comment, since we've not taken any position, I'd be interested in that. And also, I appreciate the manager's response back on the approach about permitting. It was nice to know that Congress does actually have to specifically authorize new projects. And also, the background, which matched up with my research, but what I failed to communicate with clarity was, I understand the shortened process. I was talking about how to use the shortened project to have a larger scope, to go after an omnibus global permitting, and then a speedier process to get the permits for each basin, so that we don't have to, each and every project, you're not paying the overhead of that permitting process. And I know that's something that can be done, and how come we can't use our model and engagement with these agencies to take a new approach to get a much broader authorization and a shortened process than micro project approval? I know that's doable, and that's what I was referring to. I feel, I'm sorry that I failed to mention that with sufficient clarity, but that's the issues I wanted to bring up today. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'd be, I think we will have the opportunity during the retreat to address a number of those. Barbara?
Well, just in case we don't, the general assembly issue is something that I was thinking about. There are so many bills out there now, and, you know, the little bit that we're getting feedback on, just from the ones that we had on our list, just don't scratch the surface of what's out there. A lot of the bills that I think we would want to support, some of them we would want to not support, but we just don't know what they're all out there, and we have really almost no way of knowing. I wonder if we could look at reinstating what we used to do, and that was meet with our delegation several times during the year. We used to make one trip up there during the session, the whole council used to go. And with our federal representatives, too. I remember Owen Pickett used to have a breakfast for us. We just never meet with our delegations anymore. I think we've sort of separated ourselves, and I think it's time for us to look at maybe going back to having a dialogue with them, so that we know what they're planning on introducing, and they know what we would like to, and we don't get in this situation. But there's a big void there.
Aaron?
Just to piggyback off of that, as well, like the, for us to expand our legislative package, I think our legislative package should be a lot more, or have a lot more details and in-depth on bills we propose or oppose, not that we propose, that we like or oppose. And so I'd like for us to take more of a in-depth look and approach to our legislative package, because just obviously separating during separate resolutions from every other proposed bill that goes before the House or Senate is kind of, I don't think that's just a very viable process in going forward. So I'd like for us to just create, to take more look at the way we approach the legislative agenda, legislative package.
I think that's a good idea, and I think we should be meeting with our delegation. Years ago, we met with the school board with them, and I don't think it should be a once-a-year thing, I think it's got to be a little bit more ongoing, so I do kind of concur, okay? Guy?
Yeah, I was going to say, we meet weekly during the sessions, the general assembly, so there is no reason other than time and money, which are reasons enough, that we could not get a more robust report and act on it in terms of, this is legislation that is being introduced, this seems to relate to what you were trying to do or trying not to do, you might want to take a position on it. And we, I mean, I look at the Virginia Municipal League site and others trying to, and it's pretty hard to do, but it would be, I realize we may have to pay more to get that kind of service out of our lobbying group. But I think it certainly, it certainly does not fulfill our complete obligation to simply come up with a package of bills prior to. That's part of it, but another part is, in this day and age, of instant communication and thousands of bills, is we really need to not sit back and watch what happens as if it was something that we didn't have any ability to influence, because I think we do. I think if we saw something we didn't like and took positions on it, and it was publicized, it could influence the outcome of it, and I think that's a very valuable contribution to our citizens' health, safety, and welfare.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Council agenda review.
Okay, under ordinances, resolutions. At this point, we have no speakers for anything, so.
Sorry, we just have, she doesn't want to sign up on one particular item, she just wants to bring in some other comments and send that into the plan items.
Okay. All right, so under ordinances, resolutions, we don't have any speakers. Does anybody have any issues with any of these things not being on consent?
I do.
Okay, John?
I'm number four.
Okay.
So we have one speaker on several items.
Okay. All right. So you want to vote no on those, all three?
Yes.
Or do you want to pull it?
I want to pull it. I want to have a discussion on it. I don't think the public is owed that.
Okay. Anything else?
Item three.
What about item three?
I'm opposed to, I'm not voting for it.
Vote no?
Yeah.
Yes, that's one about not entitle and right, that everybody can take a single family home and put two-
Anybody else want to vote no on item three?
I do.
We, we don't have any speakers on that?
No.
Can we pull it?
Yeah, I'd love to have a discussion on that.
Sure.
So people can understand what people are voting no on.
Sure. I don't know why people would vote no on that, but, okay. Anything else under ordinances, resolutions?
There's going to be a discussion on that. Apparently, we are. We're pulling that, and there is going to be a discussion. That's great.
Okay. All right, under planning, the first one, Greg McMackin Mills Collins, Lynn Haven District, that's the one that we deferred. Bobby, can you give us 20 seconds on that?
Yes, Mr. Wood. The applicant and the property owner were notified soon and after the meeting. They understood that both of them were on the hook for having to clean up the property. We went to the property on Friday, and significant progress was made in the cleanup. We went out this morning, the applicant was there still cleaning up before the hearing, so he is making significant progress. It still needs some work, but we're still, but he has made long strides to get it where- Those are still there, 'cause those take a little bit, you've gotta get a, I think we have to move his stuff out of the way to pull some of those out, so.
Okay, just make-
Do we have pictures?
How much look they were-
Yes, we have pictures.
All right. I'd like to see them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I think there's gonna be opposition to this from the neighbors, so we'll end up having to hear that one. All right, Town Center Associates Two LLC Indoor Recreation Facility, that's the Lynn Haven District. I'm okay with that. Everybody else okay with that? All right, then we start numbers three through 23 are short-term rentals. I'm just assumed not read every one of these, but I can if you guys want us to until 6:00.
No, but I'm not, more than we might have been saying.
And I know we're also gonna be talking about short-term rentals and an executive session.
We have a prolonged discussion.
We have a very long discussion about an executive session.
I'm voting no on 23.
Yeah, I think we'll pull 23.
Which one's 23?
What are you gonna do on these short-term rentals?
Well, that, that's what I'm asking, just, is, I mean, we'll start off, CEBT properties in the Beach District, there's three of them. Um, there's actually one, two, three. Three for CEBT properties consisting of five short-term rentals. Mr. Tower, did you wanna do anything with those?
Yeah, I, I, I really don't wanna do anything until we've had the discussion here. It's, uh, I don't know where I'm gonna come out until I've had the city attorney's-
We have an hour allocated for short-term rentals.
Right, so-
We have an agenda review after our closed session.
I got it.
If you go to a closed session and finish this.
Mark, can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you do one? I, I- Can we go out in the closed session af- if we have time and do the agenda review again?
Sure you can.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so then-
No, I'm just, no, I'm waiting to get, 'cause I, I'm hoping that we're gonna get a deferral on 24, but if not, I'm vote no, and I want it pulled. I wanna discuss what's happening.
Say, you wanna hear that one?
I'm not talking about it. It's been poorly staffed.
Right, so, say the least. Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Okay, um, at this point, we have a lengthy closed session, so if I recommend, this might be the opportune time to take a break.
After, after, yes.
Oh, okay. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purposes or for disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3. Beach District, Beach District, Lynn Haven District, Council District, Princess Anne District, Princess Anne District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8. Short-term rental ordinance, Senate Bill 485. Personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public bodies pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A2. Counsel appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. So, I have a motion.
So moved.
Second, any second. Okay, roll, please.
Ms. Dan?
Hi.
Ms. Emily?
Hi.
Ms. Ma?
Hi.
Aye.
Mr. Blainstein?